City Council meeting for Monday, June 12th, 2017. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Well.
Except we don't have a flag.
I have no idea why we don't, but we'll just...
Okay, well, the flag would normally be there. Let's act like you do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can't believe we didn't notice.
Okay. We improvised.
Thank you for doing, for humoring us with that. All right, next item of business would be the roll call. Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Councilmember Martin. Pollocka?
Here.
Piana?
Here.
Leaks May?
Here.
Mayor Colter?
Here, thank you. We have a quorum this evening. Is there a motion to excuse Councilman Martin?
I move to excuse Councilman Martin.
Is there support? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. And I think there are a couple of changes to the agenda. Because of time constraints of some of our guests who are here for the skate park, we will move that up to right before public hearings. So after the presentations, but before public hearings, we'll take up regular agenda items D and E. Are there other amendments, changes to the agenda?
Your honor, I would ask that we move Consent Agenda 7D, the sponsorship agreement with Ford Motor Company, to the regular agenda, as I am not able to vote on that item.
All right, we'll move Consent Agenda Item D to Regular Agenda Item F. Other changes to the agenda? Otherwise, a motion would be in order.
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All right, moved by Piana and supported by Pollocka. Any discussion on the amended agenda? All right, Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you.
The agenda is adopted. So now moving on to presentations, and we have a number of them this evening, and the first one is Police Officer Commendations. And our police chief, Tim Collins, is here to make that presentation this evening. Chief, good evening.
Good evening, your honor.
Did you get new shoes?
I keep them where the flags are. I thought that the Assistant City Manager would have like popped a flag up on from the Internet or something. Good evening, your honor, City Council, and all the public. We would like to make a presentation to Officer Bishop and Officer Shank here this evening. This incident occurred back on April 4th at about 1:21 in the morning. Officer Shank and Officer Bishop responded to an address on East Hazelhurst regarding a heroin overdose. Upon their arrival, they found an unresponsive male. The caller had already started CPR. Officer Shank and Officer Bishop exhausted both of their Narcan kits on the victim and began rescue breathing. Their efforts continued for a significant amount of time due to the Ferndale Rescue being delayed by a train. The Ferndale Rescue arrived and continued treating the man until he regained consciousness. And both of the actions of both the officers and the fire department undoubtedly saved this gentleman's life. And I know this is, seems like this goes on and on, that we're, that the police department is using these Narcan kits, and with the opioid epidemic that we're suffering, we're still trying to do our part to make sure that these officers here did their part and saved the man's life. So we're very appreciative of that.
Thank you. Can you tell we don't rehearse these meetings in advance? The next presentation is the IMPE Robotics Team. And Councilwoman Leaks May, do you want to introduce our members this evening?
Sure. So I invited the IMPE Robotics Team here because I felt they had a very impressive season, and I wanted, you know, to share with the community all of the great work that they've been doing. So I'll let them tell you all about their successes, and we'll meet their robot. So IMPE Robotics Team.
Nice. So there's a microphone there if you don't mind, just so folks at home could also hear you. You can take it right out of there. Yep, appreciate it.
Hi, my name's John Stellard, and I'm co-team captain of the Ferndale High School IMPE Robotics Team. Annabelle Seaco is also here with me, she's my other team captain. So basically, as a team, we put in, as a total, around $200 to build this robot in a span of about six weeks. And then we go on to compete at district level competitions, and eventually moving on to hopefully state and national events, which we did this year. This year was highlighted by a district championship win, where we also came home with a chairman's award, which, for those of you who don't know, goes with working in your community and anything that doesn't have to do with the robot. So this year was by far our most successful six season, where we, this is our 10th year, so this was our most successful, most successful season. And as a team, we rely a lot on funding, and a lot of people think that our funding comes mostly from our school district, but it actually mostly comes from parent sponsors and corporate sponsors, and actually a lot of local businesses around here. And you'll be able to see us doing Tag Day in the spring as well, or the early winter, or the late winter, actually, sorry. So as a team, our battle is, or our mission is to create a battle against technological literacy inside of our school system. So we've recently expanded to work at the upper elementary school, where we've created a Lego League team, and we're going to be moving into the middle school with a First Tech Challenge team in our upcoming year, trying to get STEM into more of our schools in our community. So we're really trying to create an impact wherever we can. On top of that, our team is very close to being 50% girls and 50% boys, which is something we take a lot of pride in, because a lot of teams do struggle with that, but we're doing a really good job with that. And also creating a strong basis with the minority representation within our team. And so that's something that we really do like to hold ourselves high on, and something that is represented with our chairman's award. So a lot of our, a lot of our mission is just really trying to create a positive impact in our school. I know that we bring the robot out here, and it's like our big highlight, but it's really a lot more about that, is that it's really, it's really like creating a really safe environment for students in our school system, and it's really important for us to notice that and recognize that.
So as John said, I'm Annabelle Seaco, and I want to tell you about our robot. So this year's game was called, it was called First Steamworks. So it was steampunk-inspired. We designed our robot to be able to take gears in through the back where this little flap is, and then this comes down, the pneumatics are charged, so it's up right now. But the gear slides through here, and then this flaps down, and then we are able to place a gear on a peg, and then there's a human that pulls that gear back up into an airship. So I think that that's my favorite thing about the robot. The robot also climbs a rope. It's a very skinny rope. Do you have it, Jacob? So yeah, it climbs this rope, that's the end game, so the last 30 seconds of the game, we're able to scale this and lift up a davit that lights up, and that gives us a lot of points at the end of the game. We also designed a shooter on our robot that we found we didn't use as much as we thought we would, because we were such an efficient gear robot. So that's what our robot was this year.
That's awesome.
I want to briefly talk about the awards that we won. So first off, we went to Gaylord, we won the district event against 40 different teams, and we ended up playing with two other teams as an alliance, and ended up winning the whole thing, in which we ended up getting the, this award right here along with a blue banner. And then we also have the chairman's award, which we received at Gaylord. And the chairman's award, John briefly talked about this, but it is the highest award that you can earn at First. And the award is all about showing an impact on your community, being a positive role model, have leadership within your community, fundraising, we participate in different things like Relay for Life every year, do different demonstrations, help out with communities, do bottle drives, and doing all these things where, and winning this award will just shows other teams and other people all around, that robotics is not just about building the best robot, winning all the competitions, it's about making an impact in your society and your community, and making your world and the people around you a better place.
Why don't you introduce the other members of your team, just so we know who you all are?
Well, my name is Jacob, I am the scout captain, so I basically help out with making people watch other robots, and so we can eventually make a pick list for playoffs and help win us, get us a win.
My name is Shavon Beecham, I was one of the members who was helping fix the robot.
My name's Christian Mitchell, and I help with the chairman's team, which got us that award.
Excellent. I'm curious, does the robot have a name?
All right.
There's a story.
So we were standing in line before our first competition, and we were thinking about that, because a lot of people were worried about the name, like what we were going to name it. So we ended up with Bad MF, which stands for Bad Mini-Fridge. Because it really does kind of resemble a mini-fridge, so we went with that.
Okay, we'll go with that. We'll go with Mini-Fridge.
That sounds like a Ferndale thing to do.
Also, can you share how many members are on the IMPE Robotics Team, and also on the back of your shirts are the list of sponsors in the community that...
So last year, this year, we had 52 team members, and I think we had about 45 coming with us to competitions. And so we are one of the bigger teams, and we did have kids from our middle school on our team, which is why we're moving towards our First Tech Challenge program, so we can get those kids into more leadership roles in the middle school, and so they have more experience when they're coming up to our team. And so one thing I would like to add on is that I do see a lot of people out here, and that, I'm sure you guys know people in the community, but I would really like to encourage you to try and get any young student that you know involved into one of our programs, whether it's upper, or in the middle school, or in the high school. Like, I was never interested in engineering, and now you can see I'm team captain and I drive the robot, and it just, it really does have an impact on the students, and I would really encourage you to get the little ones involved, because it's important.
Excellent. And to her point, read the sponsors on the shirt, because we want the community to know who is supporting this great team, so...
You're the newest one? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Scheffler, FCA, Ford, Sapa, IBM, Garden Fresh, Regina Chain, PTSA, Ferndale High School, Ferndale Education Foundation, the FRC State of Michigan Grant, and all our families. And a lot of these sponsors are where our mentors work, so that's a kind of cool connection that we have.
Here's a list if you guys just want...
Awesome. Well, thank you, thank you for, thank you for bringing it with to council and sharing it with the community. Congratulations, guys. Great job. MF, what was it? Something bad. That's awesome. But I'd hate to have to follow that. Oh wait, I do have to follow that. Because the next presentation is the presentation of our Community Foundation Grant Awards. And normally, Councilman Martin, who is the president of the Community Foundation, would do this, but he's not here this evening, he's not feeling well. Greg and I are both on the board, so I think we can cover it for him, right?
I think so.
All right, so we're going to, hang on, let me get my list. Excellent.
You printed out your notes? I didn't print out my notes.
It is, good. So why don't we come on up, and then we're going to, we'll use the mic. So for those of you who don't know, Ferndale has a community foundation, and every year the board gets together to determine how the funds will be distributed among our local nonprofit organizations. And this year, we're doing a total of, how much did, you're the treasurer, so how much are we giving out total, Greg?
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred dollars to our local community nonprofit organizations. And so we would like to recognize them this evening, and have them come up and accept their check if they're here, and I think most of them are here, but we'll find out in a minute. So first of all, and I see Heather here, so Heather, come on up, because there's a $2,500 grant to the Ferndale Housing Commission for the communality gardens at both the locations. So Heather, why don't you tell us just a little bit about what that project is?
Thank you, thank you so much. We're going to be constructing four raised bed community gardens at each of our apartment buildings, on Withington and on East Nine Mile. It'll give our residents an opportunity to grow vegetables, herbs, whatever they're interested in, it'll give a chance to build community among them, but also provide healthy food alternatives for everybody. So we're looking forward to gardening, and we've reached out to the community garden that's already in place, so we're going to be partnering with them on some educational opportunities, too. So we're really, really excited, thank you.
Here's your check, and stay up here, and then we'll do a group photo when we're done, if you don't mind, all right. So then the second award goes to the Ferndale Elementary PTA, and I know there's a few, several people here from the PTA, correct? So whoever wants to either represent the group, or as many as you like can come, because I know it's people not just at the PTA, but help support the project as well. And by the way, the project was the sensory garden for students, and we'll have you describe a little bit more about what that's about. Good evening, guys.
Hi, my name is Christine McDonald, I'm a parent of a student at Upper Elementary, and this is, this grant is going to make it possible for us to put in a sensory garden at Upper Elementary on Rosewood and Oak Park, and we have a design, really beautiful, and we're very excited about it becoming kind of an outdoor classroom. This combined with, we partnered with Local Kitchen, this is Angela Knight from Local Kitchen and Bar, and we had three fundraisers. Maybe we can talk about that really quick.
Oh, I'm so nervous. I'm really good at a table. So Christine and I connected a few months ago, several months ago, actually, they were starting to do work on the sensory garden, had gotten this really great plan, and, you know, we had sort of been talking at the restaurant, you know, what could we do this year, what could we kind of help with? And when this came up, it seemed like an obvious choice. I'm a longtime Ferndale resident, I have a child who goes to Ferndale Schools, and we also have several employees at the restaurant who have children at schools. So it was an obvious thing for us to try to connect and contribute to this. And so we did three dinners over the course of about six weeks, and we contributed 20% of sales for those dinners, for anybody who came in and wanted to participate. And everybody participated. We, you know, we tried very hard to make sure that even if, even if the people that were coming in weren't there for the dinner, that they participated. And so we kind of like, they came in, we said, you know, are you a part of the fundraiser? Oh no, what's that? And so it was a way for us to kind of spread the word, too. So we're really proud to be a part of this, a part of this community, and, thank you.
And yeah, so we're gonna, our goal is not just a beautification project, we want the kids, every, every class, our goal is to have an outdoor learning experience or experiment with, you know, incorporating the gardens that we have. So please come by and check them out this summer, so, thank you.
So that's great. So on behalf of the Community Foundation, a check for $2,000. So congratulations to the Ferndale Elementary PTA. Our next award is to the, you can stay up, yeah, we want a group photo, if you don't mind, we'll get a group photo if you, the next award is going to be to the Ferndale Concert Band, and I saw, there's Sharon, for their promotional materials. Oh, and yeah, we got a two for this evening. So why don't you guys tell us a little bit about, you tell us all the time about the concert band, and I know there's a concert coming up, so you can, you can plug that as well. And tell us a little bit about what you're going to do with the funds.
Thank you. We applied for the funds for the sole purpose of making the community more aware of what we do, and that is to put on five concerts a year. What this allows us to do is, we will have now an over-the-road banner on Nine Mile, and it'll also allow for the cost of paying the city people to put up the banner and take down the banners. So we hope to see all of you at this upcoming concert on the 18th Father's Day at 3:00 in the afternoon at the Ferndale High School. We're also having an ice cream social immediately following. The admission to the concerts are always free, but donations are gladly appreciated, and we are going to be charging $3 for our ice cream social. And this is Tim, he's the co-founder of the band. Usually it's just me. Tim Brennan is the co-founder, the logistics person, the tuba player, the percussionist, the sometime conductor, so, and a longtime resident, and uncle to Cindy, and...
Well, thank you, guys. So on behalf of the Community Foundation, we're pleased to award you a check in the amount of $1,500. So there you go, congratulations. Yes. All right. We also have an award to the Ferndale DDA, and so Cindy, is that going to be you? Come on up. And this is a check for $1,000 to support the public art, and in particular, the bus stops. So Cindy, tell us, that's been a very successful project this year, tell us a little bit about that.
Yeah, this will help us continue our Art and Smart Bus Shelter project, which is beautifying the ugly old bus shelters that are in the downtown. Our first Art and Smart project is on Nine Mile Road, right in front of the Rust Belt. We did it in a week's time for $250, and it's been a very successful program, it's very well-received. Not only does it help us extend our public art, Art Town project, it also helps us celebrate multimodal transportation. So we're really excited not only to partner with Smart, but this was really a project that came to us because a volunteer had an idea. So it was really a great community project, and we're looking forward to doing the other three bus shelters, and this is going to help us a long way with that.
Well, we look forward to it, too, and on behalf of the Community Foundation, a check for $1,000, so thank you very much. And our final award this evening is to the Ferndale Youth Assistance. Is there someone from, yeah, there, okay, I'm sorry, there you are. And this is for the Middle School Safe Night, a check for $500 for the Middle School Safe Night. So welcome, and tell us a little bit about Safe Night.
Safe Night is something that we do for the middle school children on a Friday night, just so that they have somewhere fun and safe to spend time. And we have a lot of support from the community, a lot of support from volunteers, we've got a DJ, we open the pool, we have the basketball courts open, and popcorn machines and cotton candy machines. And it's one of many things that Ferndale Youth Assistance does, but I just think it's really nice for the kids to have somewhere safe with so many options for recreation, and it's always a packed house, so they must be enjoying it. So thanks for helping us continue it.
Happy to do so. So on behalf of the Community Foundation, a check in the amount of $500. Thank you very much. Care if you don't mind taking the picture, and then you can give a hand to all of these wonderful folks in our community. So many wonderful projects going on in our community by our nonprofit organization, so congratulations to all of you. The next item of presentation would be a proclamation honoring Roger Smith of Ferndale Public Schools, and Councilwoman Leaks May, I think is going to introduce that item.
Well, yes. Roger Smith has been a teacher in the community for about, I believe it was 34 years, and has finally decided to retire and do something for himself for a change. So it's an honor, with honor, I would like to, first, may I read the proclamation?
Please do, yes.
Read the proclamation honoring Roger Smith. At a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Ferndale, Oakland County, Michigan, held in the council chambers, at 300 East Nine Mile, well, we know where it is, okay. Mayor Dave Colter, and on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, extends the city's appreciation to Roger Smith for his dedication to the Ferndale School District and our community. Mr. Smith has served the Ferndale School District since August 22nd, 1983. Mr. Smith was instrumental in building and maintaining strong programs at Ferndale High School as an administrator and as a teacher. In particular, in particular, the performing arts program, peer-to-peer outreach, and the Upstandard program are all examples of great opportunities that exist at Ferndale High School due to his leadership. Mr. Smith is a credit to this community, and it is with heartfelt appreciation that we celebrate his achievement. And I don't see him here today.
I'm not sure he was going to be able to make it for this this evening, but we'll make sure that he gets those... make sure that he gets those proclamations.
So please, give a hand for Mr. Smith, he's given a lot to this community.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Our next item of business, or our next presentation, I should say, is a county update from our county commissioner, Helene Zach. Good to see you, Commissioner.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to give you a couple of things going on.
You don't have any extra flags up at the county, do you?
This is a really tough act to follow right now with, it's hard to beat the robot and all the wonderful work of the Community Foundation awardees. I want to have you save the date, on August 9, there's going to be a small business item program, How to Do Business with County of Oakland. And so I will bring more information forward, but we really are trying to get small business vendors to learn, to place bids and do business with Oakland County. And our goal is to connect people, how do you do it, and build relationships that way. I do want to bring to people's attention that the formerly called Oakland Community Mental Health Authority has renamed itself, they are now the Oakland Community Health Network. And part of that thinking process is, by state legislation, they did take on serving substance abuse a couple of years ago. And there's a great effort on the integration of mental health, substance abuse, and medical treatment coming together. And so the name does reflect more of what they are continuing to do. I serve, when it comes to transportation, I want to remind people that through the Area Agency on Aging 1B, there is a lower-cost, door-to-door ride program called MyRideTo.com. And this is a network of providers that will help people, seniors, disabilities, travel to doctors. It goes beyond the scope of some of our local Smart Buses. And one of the things that, that the Regional Transit Authority is doing is they're putting more money into this My Ride To, so it'll cross county borders. It'll be a regional transportation rather than just serving the six counties of the Area Agency on Aging 1B. Finally, I just want to thank Ferndale Schools for sending students to Youth and Government Day. We had Ferndale students there in my district, I also had some Oak Park, they are, were wonderful, and it was a very interactive program where the students were broken into three different topics, where they had to look at different issues such as whether police officers off to, should be wearing, what do you call it?
Body cameras?
Body cameras. And that was one of the topics, for example. And should we regulate and tax soda pop because it's not healthy for you? So students were assigned pros and cons, and had to argue and vote on those particular resolutions. There was really wonderful feedback about this particular Youth and Government Day. And I want to thank Ferndale, and I hope you'll come back again next year.
Excellent.
That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone have any questions for the Commissioner? Thanks for being here, appreciate it. Our next presentation is a resolution of condolence for the family of Philip Poole. And I will read that. For some of you who have been in Ferndale for, for a little while, Philip Poole was a longtime council member in Ferndale and a very important part of this community, and he recently passed away. And I'd like to read the resolution now, if you don't mind. Mayor Dave Coulter and the Ferndale City Council extends the city's condolences to the family of Philip Poole. Mr. Poole was a member of the city council for 20 years, from 1979 till the end of 1998. He served on the Ferndale Planning Commission from 2002 to 2008, and was its liaison to the Board of Zoning Appeals. He also served on the Ferndale Board of Review, and later as an election inspector for the city. He was active in other, many other civic organizations as well. He served in the U.S. Army Reserve and retired as a colonel in 1999. Phil was a municipal attorney for the city of Southfield, and earned his J.D. and engineering degrees from Wayne State University, his business administration degree from University of Detroit, and his economics degree from the University of Michigan, Dearborn. Phil Poole was a true public servant, known for his thoughtful and independent perspective on issues, and his counsel was always respected. He was a credit to his family as well as to our community, and it is with deep sorrow that we mourn his loss. And it is, truly is a loss for the Ferndale community, and again, our thoughts and prayers and condolences to Peggy and the entire Poole family. So thank you for allowing us to do that, and we'll make sure, Barb, that we'll get that to his family if you pass that down. Thank you. All right. Our final presentation is a resolution in support of the Mayor's National Climate Action Agenda, 2017 Climate Resolution. And I will introduce that item and then, but yeah, Jordan, you can come on up. I'll introduce that item and then I'm going to turn it over to Jordan. I'm sorry, yeah. But as some of you may know, in the last couple of weeks, it was announced that the President was going to withdraw the United States from the Paris Climate Change Agreement. And a lot of communities have expressed their disappointment with that decision in, in different ways. And in particular, mayors have been banding together to commit their cities to adopt the standards of the Paris Agreement, so that even if the United States, as a single entity, as a country, is not part of that accord, that there's much that individual cities could do to make sure that we live up to the agreement. And so I signed on as the mayor of Ferndale to support the Paris Agreement, and to do what I could to make sure that the city of Ferndale was committed to the Paris Agreement. But of course, I'm just one person, and in Ferndale, we make decisions and policies with the entire council. So what I would like to do is have Jordan come up, and first of all, just sort of give us an overview of what we're already committed to doing here in the sustainability and climate impact issues that we're already dedicated to doing. Those things fall through his department. And then I would like to propose that council also adopt a resolution that I'll read after Jordan is done for its consideration as well. So, Jordan?
Great, thank you, Mayor. And before you read that resolution, I'm going to recommend that the third stanza of it, if you will, I recommend omitting that, and the reason is, it references Michigan's statewide mandates. They had a climate action plan in 2009, and in looking at that, I think they've done some work since then, and so our department will do a little more research before we cite Michigan's exact targets.
Thank you.
That being said, appreciate the opportunity, and I'll provide that context you were looking for. And so, you know, joining onto this agreement and making additional commitments to sustainability is sort of an outgrowth of Ferndale's existing commitments that are articulated in the master plan, which, for those who don't know, that was a product that was adopted in January of this year, after about two years or so of, of development with community engagement, et cetera. And sustainability was sort of an underpinning theme of that entire plan. So all the different plans that we talk about, whether it's housing, or development, or improving our operations, all these different components of the master plan, sustainability was sort of woven into those as a focusing factor and a uniting factor. And so where you look at some of the things that we're doing in our strategic plan, for example, supporting our infrastructure with baseline standards for incorporating green infrastructure into improvements, every time we look at a right-of-way, an alley, a parking facilities, any other sort of public infrastructure to kind of, how can we make that green, and how is that working toward that? Looking at accessible transportation options, so coordinating parking capacity planning with responsible decision-making strategies rooted in sustainability. So every time we add to the parking capacity of our parking system, are we doing so for the sake of growth, and looking at a sustainable future rather than just adding parking? Then also organizational financial excellence, even the way we operate the city. So looking at minimizing fuel losses and understanding fuel consumption to optimize our fleet. And by the way, the things I'm reading from are, these are cited from our strategic plan. So these are deliverables of our strategic plans that the city's adopted, so you know that these are things we're working on. For example, continuing to convert our streetlights to LED, continuing our street tree program via updates to the plan and its inventory, so making sure we have that urban tree canopy, implementing a tree planting program in neighborhoods and alongside streets, developing and adopting a citywide green vision, and I'm going to come back to that in a moment. But also adding recycling to public trash receptacles downtown, at public facilities and events, and in city parks. So making sure that we have that capacity in all of our public spaces. And that citywide green vision, that's sort of the vehicle for this work that'll happen under the mayors, and if the resolution passes tonight, obviously the council's commitment to standing in solidarity with these other mayors throughout the, the nation. And in fact, that number, as of this week, was somewhere over 270 mayors nationwide, in addition to 195 nations that have signed on. So the general, I neglected to mention, actually, another key component of the strategic plan, you might wonder, how the heck are we going to do all this work? So part of the strategic plan, thankfully, since it's in my department, is to hire sustainability planners, so that Justin and myself don't fall over trying to accomplish all these items in addition to the daily flow of business development and permitting, and all the other functions that our CED department does for residents and businesses every day. So that sustainability planner will be the key coordinator and champion for this commitment inside the administration to make sure that we move it forward. So that's generally the context, Mayor, and happy to take any questions you, the council might have.
So let me read the resolution first, and then we'll begin the discussion with, at council. And so the resolution is, and I want to sort of clarify that there are also, you know, specific strategies around greenhouse emissions and climate change that are, that are broader than sustainability. So we will have to talk, not just this evening, but going forward, about what our commitment is to those. But broadly speaking, the resolution is this. Consensus exists among the world's leading climate scientists that global warming caused by emissions of greenhouse gases from human activities is among the most significant problems facing the world today. And documented impacts of global warming include, but are not limited to, increased occurrences of extreme weather events, i.e. droughts and floods, adverse impacts on ecosystems, demographic patterns, and economic value chains. And responding to the climate change provides communities an opportunity to access first-mover advantages in the range of products, services, and know-how that transitioning to a climate compatible future brings. And the Paris Agreement resulted in a commitment from almost every nation to take action and enact programs to limit global temperature increase to less than 2 degrees Celsius, with an expectation that this goal would, would be reduced to 1.5 degrees in the future. So now therefore be it resolved that the city of Ferndale, number one, indicates its commitment to reducing GHG emissions through an implementation of a climate action plan, and two, joins other U.S. cities in the climate mayors network in adopting and supporting the goals of the Paris Agreement, and finally, three, commits to exploring the potential benefits and costs of adopting policies and programs that promote the long-term goal of GHG emissions reductions while maximizing economic and social co-benefits of such action. So that would be the resolution before you. So questions first, or we could do a motion, and then comments and, and questions, whatever the pleasure of council is.
I move to support the resolution, to support the Paris Agreement.
Support. Moved by Piana and supported by Leaks May. Thank you. Now, discussion on that item.
I want to start with sort of saying, expressing gratitude and thanks to our Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Commission members, who've been helping guide and get the city to this point of having sustainability in our actual master plan. They've been working on it for a year, for years, and we actually discussed whether or not should we do a climate action plan specifically, or put in sustainability into the master plan. So I think they're both, get to the, to the end of what we're really trying to do. And that is really having, we're a small city that can have a big impact on the reducing the effects of climate change in the region as well as the world. So our small part can have a, you know, impact the way that we live. I think for me, the difference between a sustainability plan and climate action plan is data collection and analysis. So while our sustainability parts in our master plan are about the strategies that address the effects of climate change by reducing that, the climate action plan is where you actually document the data to see if it's actually having an impact and you are reducing it. So I think that's really important where we apply our sustainability planner, which came out of this last year's budget session. So actually having someone to do it, which is what we didn't have two years ago, when we discussed whether we should do a sustainability plan or a climate action plan. And by us doing this, we'll be in partnership with Hazel Park, which has a climate action plan, Ypsilanti, Southgate, and a lot of other cities in the, in the region. So moving in the, in the right direction. So to that end, I'm really supportive of this. I think we're doing the right strategies in Ferndale and have been. Now it's actually time to start tracking our data to make sure it's actually having an impact.
Excellent. Other comments or questions?
I would just like to add that I, I think it's really sad that the federal government has forced us locally to have to make this commitment publicly. It really should be a national decision. And I would like to share one program, I have mentioned it casually in, in passing. There are a number of communities across the country that have gone electric and hybrid with all their vehicles, their city vehicles. I would like us to consider that, looking at just our inspection vehicles. Obviously, you can't get a dump truck to, you know, a hybrid dump truck, I think that's a little impossible, but...
You can have an idle policy.
You can have an idle policy as well.
No idle policy, I mean. Not, not to idle.
So I would like us to look into that further.
Great. Go ahead.
To that end, I want to expand on it too. While our federal government makes some decisions about whether to participate in this global movement to, you know, try to reduce the impacts of climate change, we're seeing a lot of areas starting to flood more, and we have more significant weather events. So the reality is, communities, cities across the United States actually have to figure out how to address these issues, because it impacts your infrastructure, it impacts the quality of life for people. So just by ignoring it doesn't mean that, you know, significant weather events are not going to happen, and that communities, the front lines of public works, police and fire, still actually have to respond to that. So this is about making sure that when we have these types of negative events, perhaps like the 2014 flood, that the resources spent to actually address it are lessened over time because we're putting in good strategies in place to mitigate those severe weather events, as an example. So go cities!
And I'm encouraged by how many mayors in Michigan in particular signed on. 16 mayors, including the mayor of the largest cities like Detroit, and Grand Rapids, and Flint, Ann Arbor, and so we're going to cover most of the state's population through a mayor's network, through a city's network, in order to address what is a critical problem. You know, we can, we can talk about every other issue there is out there, from education to taxes to economic development to whatever, but if we don't get this right, if we don't solve the issue of climate change on our planet, the rest of those things aren't going to matter a whole lot. So I appreciate what I hear as council's support in committing Ferndale to do what we can to reduce greenhouse emissions. Any other questions or comments? And also of the public, so since we are in open debate now, if there's anyone from the public that would like to address council on this issue, you would be welcome to do so. All right, seeing none, Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Polika.
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you, that resolution is adopted. Thanks. All right. Appreciate that, yeah. All right, we are now moving on to not the public hearings, because we've moved up two items in deference to our members of the audience here who are here for formerly regular agenda items D and E. And I'll read those items, and then Lloyd, we can talk about them as one, I think, and then we'll have to vote on them separately, obviously. But item D is a consideration to approve the quote from Hartwell Cement for the installation of concrete surfacing at a cost of $108,648, subject to the city attorney's approval of contract documents, bonds, and insurance, with the expense being charged to the Capital Outlay Park's account. And then item E is a consideration to approve the purchase and installation of skate park equipment from the American Ramp Company at a cost of $249,937.76, with the expense being charged, again, to the Capital Outlays Park account as submitted by the DPW director. And here is our DPW director, Lloyd Kirton. Do you want to introduce those items for us, Lloyd?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks.
One of the items that have been consistently identified in previous parking rec, master plans, and in our current parking rec master, master plan, is a desire by our residents for skate park features. The city is a member of the National Joint Powers Association, a national bidding organization that, that we're a member of, that we can purchase supplies through. The American Ramp Company has provided and designed, along with professional skaters and some of our very own residents, which we'll be speaking to later. The, the items that you see on the... The, the items that you see on the, the display in front of you, I'm told that the half bowl in particular is a really big deal. And so, this item is, is not just for skateboarders, it could also be used by BMX riders, scooter riders, and even wheelchair participants who, depending on your skill level and physical ability. And so, the second part of this is the preparation of the site. The current site has drainage structures and is sloped to drain towards, drainage structures. But in designing the, the surfacing for a skate park, you want as flat a surface as possible, and so, this surface is designed in concrete with only a 1% grade difference throughout. Those specifications were developed by the Ramp Company and were approved by our city engineer. My recommendation is that council approve both of those for installation at Wilson Park. And I know Lorena has some special guests here tonight for council to talk to, and I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Well, Lorena, why don't you and your special guests come up and address council this evening? Good evening.
Good evening. So, as part of selecting the design for the skate park, the youth behind me have actually played a major part in that as well. So, they were involved, and they wanted to come in front of you today to talk about the skate park, talk about how it's going to impact them in a positive way and what it means for them today. So, I'll let them come up individually and give a brief presentation to you guys.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Michael Gagne. I'm pretty sure most of you know my parents, and...
Yes, we do.
And so, I think the skate park's important because it gives kids, like, a safe place to be able to hang out and have fun. And it's not just for skateboarders, it's also for anybody that wants to come and have fun. And it's also good because this keeps, like, other people from destroying property, such as, like, skating stairs and breaking cement and grinding cement and breaking that, too. So, yeah.
Not that you've ever done that.
No.
No. Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, Michael.
Okay. Hello, my name is Jack Wild.
Hi, Jack.
And I think we need the skate park because instead of skating in front of your house, it's kind of boring, and I'd rather just skate in a skate park. Yeah. And I like the skate park because it has, like, perfect stuff.
Hello, my name is Brendan Mills, and I think the skate park will be good because other cities around us have them, and it would just be easier to have a local one so we don't have to drive really far.
Fair enough. Good evening.
My name is Natalie Donat, and I think the skate park is good because, so, like, when, maybe in summer, and you don't, so, if you just wake up and you just play on your phone, you can get off your phone electronics and play with your friends and have fun instead of just being on electronics all day.
I love that idea.
Well, so, we have to wear helmets at the skate park, and that's a good thing so people don't get hurt. Yeah.
Yep. That would be a good thing.
I also agree with Jack because there are many people that I have seen not come out well with accidents, such as this guy named Scotty Kramer. He was wearing a helmet, but he, like, got this giant dent in his head because of this accident. Because of his helmet, he saved, it saved his life, so, I've always worn a helmet because of that, so, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think the skate park is good because at the skate park, it has, like, a bunch of variety of things that all levels can skate, so, like, people can, like, practice and stuff.
Yep. Excellent, thank you.
You should wear a helmet, maybe wrist pads or something, because I think one time my dad was skateboarding on, and he was riding on, like, a little bar or something, and then he fell off and got this huge bump on his head, and he still has it, so... So, you should wear helmets and maybe wrist pads or knee pads or elbow pads so you don't hurt yourself.
So, it's really unfair bringing out the children, by the way. Right, like, we're going to vote no now. No, great job, you guys, excellent, and you made really good points, so I appreciate your perspective. Thank you. So, are there questions or, or of council?
Comments and questions?
Yeah.
I just want to say that, being on the Parks and Recreation Commission, that we've been talking about this for about three years, and I'm glad to see that it's finally coming to, coming to fruition. But it wouldn't be coming to fruition if it hadn't been for the, the bond that the voters voted, passed, the $2 million bond. So, my question is, why was Wilson Park, questions? Why was Wilson Park selected? And I'll ask the next question after that.
Okay. Wilson Park was selected because of the lighting that's already available, the parking that's available, that's near to the, the event. Also, the skate park area is isolated from the younger children's play area, which is all the way up at Hilton Road. So, there's a considerable amount of distance between a toddler or school-aged children or older children who might be playing in the skate park. So, it provides a little bit of a safety buffer for parents, excuse me. And, and so, it was ideally suited. Later on, for council's consideration, in the year, we may also be looking at possibly adding a few extra parking spaces. There's, the way that the existing parking is configured, and I'm only talking about six or seven parking spots, but it's very easy to add additional parking at a very limited cost. And so, for those reasons, the lighting, the separation from the younger children, and the site is already basically ready for the improvements, that's why that was selected.
Okay. Is there a reason why we're doing it just at one park and not maybe putting a couple features at one park and maybe a few other features at another and kind of spreading it out?
I, I think mostly, you know, it's, certainly, one location is going to be less expensive, even though there's a considerable price tag for these premium event, equipment. But the, you know, the, really, you're going to get the most value by having them all in one place at the most bang for your buck, as far as, you know, if someone's coming to the park, they're going to be able to come there and see the full array of features. This particular park, and another reason, is that there's, there's different elements involved in the design for people of all levels of skill, and it was already mentioned by one of the designers, and, but there are, all the way from beginners to intermediate, and, as I said, it was also designed by professional skaters. So, no matter where you fall in that spectrum, you'll be able to come there and practice your, your skills and develop them further.
And based on the diagram that we have in our presentation, it, it looks like you're using the old hockey rink pad, and that's, like, kind of nestled in between the basketball court and the parking lot. Is there concern that the activity in the skate park is going to overwhelm the parking lot and the basketball court and interfere with activities that are going on in either place?
The, the basketball court in particular is currently being, being considered for reconstruction, and we haven't experienced a skate park yet. And, you know, I believe with the on-street parking, the possible expansion of a few spots in the existing parking lot, that at least, I think initially, we can, we can meet the demand. And if we have to modify something in the future, if it really is, has a very strong demand, we can do that.
Thank you.
Through the chairs. So, it looks like Fall goes well. It would be a August debut for skater.
The, the, the equipment provider has assured me that once they receive the authorization from the city, that they can have it onsite and delivered within 60 days. In the meantime, in that 60-day gap, we're going to be in there prepping the site with the concrete and other work that needs to be done in order to prepare it for installation, if approved.
Questions?
No, just wanted to share two stories. One, five years ago, I befriended...
...to make sure that it's, that it's only used in appropriate hours.
And how would that be enforced? Is this going to be fenced?
It is not going to be fenced. In fact, some of the design questions that I had was whether or not, you know, that would, they recommend that. And the American Ramp Company has told me that, through long experience, that they feel it's best not to have it because what happens is, the users tend to try to do tricks on the fence itself, and it becomes, it becomes a problem, particularly if they're getting some height in their jumps and things like that, it could potentially actually cause more of a hazard. And so, and that was why I was so concerned about separating, you know, the distances between, and so, Wilson Park was just perfect for that. But, yeah, in general, staff is going to be meeting with police, fire, even our insurance company, and we've already got suggested signage that was, we looked at, I have in my folder probably 20 different cities' rules for, that they recommend and for use of the parks. And so, we're going to get a wide variety and be able to really, in the next 60 days, we're going to really give it a good study to determine what's right for Ferndale.
So, I suppose, much like the basketball courts, I mean, at some point, you just have to chase folks out of there.
Exactly.
So, you brought up another point, which I was going to ask about, which is the liability insurance. So, to what extent do we need to increase it? What is our liability here? What...
We, we have a meeting scheduled with our insurance representative, but my experience in the past been with these type of things that, you know, it's, it's generally covered under the umbrella of the city's operations.
Really?
Whether or not the city would choose to increase it by the insurance agent's recommendation, we can certainly bring that back to the city.
I would suggest, since we have some time, you know, before this is constructed, if we could just, I mean, we can approve this this evening, but if we could come back at the appropriate time and talk about both operational procedures and liability issues, just to review it, and so, council is familiar and comfortable with how those work, that would be helpful before we open the park.
Yeah. I think we have a lot of changes coming to our parks, and we're going to have a lot of conversations about these changes in each park and how to, how do we have, you know, compliance with being safe, but also noise, shouting, things like that. But I also think we have, I'm sure you looked at Huntington Woods, right? Did you?
We actually looked at a number of different places. One of the things that we're really looking at, too, is just having a phone that nearby, that is directly connected to police and fire, you know, so that dispatch, so that in any event that there's some problem, it's going to be right to dispatch for, for assistance. No other, you know, ability to call out other than directly to the police.
So, that's great. I, I would just sort of conclude my remarks by thanking not only your team, but the, the residents who came out and the children who came out and helped inform this decision, kept bugging us to keep doing it, and demonstrated that there was actually, you know, a population of folks that wanted it, although we've heard this in our surveys. So, thank you. Thanks to the Recreation and Advisory Committee and Councilmember Pollocka, because many of these issues, just like, like you saw with the, the greenhouse emissions, where the FESC and Councilwoman Piana were instrumental in moving these along. By the time they get here, a lot of work has been done on them. So, I want to acknowledge that, just like the climate change, on this one, the Parks and Rec Advisory and the residents were really instrumental in making this happen, and so, thanks, everybody. So, we need a motion, actually, and we need to do these separately. There's, there's two. Formerly, Item D would be the concrete padding, and then E is the actual park equipment. So, let's start with D.
I move to...
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, please.
Why don't you take the second one, then, okay? All right. I move to approve the quote from Hartwell Cement for the installation of concrete surfacing at a cost of, what is that, 108?
648.
648. Subject to the city attorney's approval of contract documents, bonds, and insurance, with the expense being charged to the Capital Outlay Park's account, listed.
Support.
So, it's moved by Leaks May and supported by Pollocka. Now, any discussion? Either further discussion by council or anyone in the audience that would like to address council this evening? Sharon, come on up to the speaker so everybody can hear you.
I am very excited to have a skate park coming to Ferndale. My disappointment is it's not coming to Geary Park, and so, I still see the hazards rails on our picnic tables on the roof of the pavilion over there. So, I ask that in the future, you consider having a skate park, one on the east side of Woodward and one on the west side of Woodward, because so many of the kids that are using the picnic tables are underage and probably parents are not feeling comfortable with allowing them to cross Woodward independently yet. So, I just feel that in the future, you consider using Geary Park or someplace on the west side of Woodward, that would be greatly appreciated by the Westerners.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Good point. And the kids here are going to tell their friends not to skate in Geary Park anymore. We got a new one coming. Good point. All right. Any other comments? All right, Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Now, moving on to Item E, which is, we need a motion for the consideration of the skate park equipment.
I'll do that one. I move to approve the purchase and installation of skate park equipment from the American Ramp Company at the cost of $249,937.76, with the expense being charged to Capital Outlay Park's account number as listed.
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Pollocka. Now, Pollocka, now, any additional comments, questions by anybody?
Nope, it's a, well, just a $350,000-plus investment in our parks.
It is.
So, thank you, residents.
All right, Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thanks, Lloyd, thanks, Lorena, thanks to everybody for coming out.
Councilmember Pollocka, also, thank you. And you, too, Mayor.
Thank you. So, now, moving on, next item of business would be a public hearing, and we have two public hearings this evening. Public hearing A is the approval of the St. James Oprah Exemption Certificate application as presented by Jordan, our CED director. Jordan?
Hey, counsel, how you doing? Long time no see. So, jumping right into it, and I do have it on your screen if you'd like to take a look. So, what this is here, again, so you may recall this item from earlier this year, an Oprah, for those that don't know, it stands for Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act. And what this tool is, is an incentive that essentially freezes a tax rate for a period of up to 12 years, including the construction period, for projects that, as you might guess, are obsolete property and are being rehabilitated. And so, essentially, what this does is it allows, it accounts for the fact that rehabilitating properties that are old and either in disrepair or obsolete for sort of newer development, have a lot of different other barriers to being redeveloped, this accounts for the added costs to that. And so, what this project is going to be, and I have representatives from the project here... And so, what this project is gonna be, and I have representatives from the project team here to kind of give the details, just to kind of give a refresher, I'm gonna kind of tee it up and tell you the journey it's been on so far and sort of the item that you're looking at tonight. And so, what this project is, is the conversion of the, the former St. James School, I know the church will remain active, but it's the school and the convent property that will now become 104 senior living units, uh, which is a housing option we don't currently have a lot of in the city of Ferndale. So it really adds to our housing choice. Uh, and then, uh, that is going to be a project that'll sort of redevelop that whole property there. Uh, and this, this project has been through, because it came together before our incentives policy was fully in place, uh, it hasn't been through the incentives committee, but we worked with the developers to make sure that the spirit of that policy was, was met. Uh, and so, what's before you is, uh, the first step that had to happen before this could even be considered is you have to establish what's called an Oprah District, which essentially you draw a boundary on, around the parcels for which you're gonna provide this tax abatement. And essentially, just to kind of remind you of how that abatement works, the property, uh, is established, uh, it's given a base tax value because you cannot start from zero. Now, this being a church property, started at zero. So we worked with the Oakland County Equalization Division to come up with a base value. Uh, and essentially what happens is the, the improvements that are made, will take that, you, take you from a base value of A to, you know, whatever the future value would be. So, based on those improvements. And essentially, that, that margin between value A and those, uh, and that improved value, that's what gets frozen for the 12 years. So you will be collecting tax revenue on this property, but you won't be collecting that increased margin for those 12 years. So that's kind of how that works. So, so the city will be collecting on this from day one, but you'll get, there'll be that margin. So, and the developers will be able to talk about that a little bit. And in fact, in your memo, I'm gonna kind of close my tee up with just a quick rundown of those numbers and then I'll invite the project team to kind of come up and give you some more context and take any detailed questions that you or the public may have through the public hearing. So, just to kind of sum it up, the abatement length would be 12 years plus the construction period. Uh, the approximate annual tax revenue, using the base value that we got from Oakland County of $384,000 and some change, uh, you'd be getting about, uh, $27,000 a year. So approximately $324,528 over the life of the abatement. Uh, the approximate value of the tax abatement, so over the 12 years, what's being frozen is a little over $3 million. Uh, and the private investment amount there is $11.8 million. And so, you're getting an estimated increase in value of $4 million, which, once this abatement is over, it'll be an extra $280,000 approximately to the city in tax revenue for the local jurisdictions. So that's generally, uh, the breakdown. And I'm happy to kind of let the project team come up or go through the public hearing, whichever order council desires, but the project team is here to provide additional information as needed.
Why don't you have the project team come up and give an overview, then we'll open up the public hearing. And if there's anyone here from the public that has questions, we'll allow that.
Sounds clear.
That way, the public will have the complete picture. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Ann Jamison, um, and I'm working with JS Senior Living on establishing this Oprah District. Um, and now we're at the point where we're requesting the exemption. Um, just a couple of clarifications, um, if I may, in terms of how, um, the Oprah program works. Um, it is true, it is a, up to a full 12-year tax abatement, um, but that's only applied on local taxes. The school mills, which are 24 mills, only 50% of those during the first six years are abated. So you're actually receiving a little bit more into your local, um, mill, you know, your local, um, mills in order to, you know, basically, um, fulfill the tax obligations, you know, within the city of Ferndale. So, um, that's just, you know, briefly, one clarification. As was stated previously, we did work very closely with Oakland County's Equalization Department to make sure that we had that correct base value set, because unlike a brownfield plan, uh, which typically you can set it at a zero taxable value, under the policy, um, under the Oprah statute, that is not allowable. So, um, without any, I don't really have much other to say other than we really appreciate your consideration for this. Um, it's been, um, a long time through the process, but, you know, we had to make sure everything was on the up and up there, so.
Thank you. And I don't know if you, did you-
Hi, good evening. I'm Bill Schmitz, uh, from the Ownership and Development Group. Uh, construction is proceeding, uh, abatement's been done, uh, both buildings, the convent's been taken down. We'll continue to do, uh, demo in the main building right now. And construction's gonna ramp up here the next couple of weeks as we start to pull permits and, uh, start doing the site work and start the, uh, vertical structure of the new building.
Okay.
So, that's where we're at right now.
Good. So at this point, we will open it up to the public. This is a public hearing after all. So we, uh, the public hearing is now open and is, if there's anyone that would like to address council this evening on the approval of the St. James Oprah Exemption Certificate Application, uh, this would be your opportunity to address council now. Not seen anyone? All right, then we will close the public hearing. And I will kick it over to council for any, uh, comments or questions or motions that you would have.
Um, I just wanted to say that this is a continuation of the process, that the council has already approved the actual Oprah District. And so, this is fulfilling sort of our obligation of providing this tax, um, incentive to the developer. Basically, I think, um, this is sort of a, the tax, um, abatement is sort of a win-win. We wouldn't be getting senior living if we didn't provide this, um, I think, because the project would be too, uh, financially unfeasible to do. Um, and so, at the end of the day, we're returning a property that hasn't paid any tax revenue to a productive tax generating piece of property. Um, so I think in the end, it's a win-win for the city and for our seniors who want to stay in the community that they love.
Absolutely. Is there a motion?
I move that city council approve the attached resolution regarding an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption, exemption certificate application at the parcels listed below in the resolution.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Leaks May. All right, other comments, questions?
Um, I just wanted to thank, um, the developer and Ms. Jamison for following our spirit of our incentive policy that had been in development while you had been going through this. So, thank you.
And it's great to see the work going on there. I would echo what Councilwoman Piana said, which is, this is truly, I mean, first of all, it's a win for our seniors because we don't have nearly enough housing for them. Second of all, it's, uh, it is a net gain of taxes for the city, so we appreciate that. And, uh, we look forward to your project being completed. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, if there's no other comments, I'll ask Barb to call the roll.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Uh, now, our second public hearing this evening is the approval of the Wilson Park Village Brownfield Plan and reimbursement agreement, also presented by our CED Director.
So I figure I deliver them all at once and just do a bulk operation here. It'd be a little more efficient, right? So, this is another, a different, uh, different incentive tool. And unlike the Oprah, uh, this one went through sort of the full complement of our incentives process. So it's been before the incentives committee, it's been before the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, uh, they got site plan approval from the Planning Commission prior to those two steps. And so, now it is before city council. Uh, what you're looking at is the Brownfield Plan and reimbursement agreement for, uh, the property, uh, the former Wilson School at 1244 Paxton. And what this is, uh, going to be is 28 single-family homes. And I have, uh, representation from Robertson Brothers Homes here, as well as their environmental consultant, SME, to provide some of the context. And so, I won't steal their thunder. Uh, but what I'll talk about just in general, uh, this one does follow the incentives policy. And there's actually some really innovative stuff in here. So as like an incentives nerd, I might find it exciting, you might find it advantageous to the tax rolls. We actually incorporated a tool that Oakland County and, uh, and the project consultant actually helped us come up with. It was, uh, essentially what's called a pass-through agreement. So, uh, what you're familiar with, with, uh, for those who follow our incentives process, uh, essentially, we'll capture a brownfield TIF, which essentially amounts to, you start at value A and you make improvements to a property, becomes value B. The increment between the two, just like in an Oprah, uh, instead of being abated, gets captured and it refunds those excess costs that are site improvement, infrastructure, additional barriers to developing, uh, typically obsolete, sometimes environmentally contaminated property. Uh, so normally, the entire amount of that increment is captured over the life of the plan. In this plan, uh, because again, you had a base value of zero to allow for some kind of local receipt during the life of the plan, we have what's called a pass-through agreement. So only 95% of that, uh, total increment is captured. So you have a 5% that goes to the local jurisdictions and that's on top of the 5% administrative fee. So there's a little more revenue coming to the city. And so, I'll scroll through the little table here to just kind of show you how we sum it up. You can see that administrative fee that I just mentioned amounts to about $133,000 over the life of the plan. Uh, and again, this, this plan will last a maximum of 25 years. I'll back up a second. So to be the lesser of 20 years or 11 years per the estimates in the Brownfield Plan. So we will not exceed the cap in our incentives policy. And then, following the developer reimbursement period, uh, for five additional years, uh, there will be that 95% capture, uh, going into what's called the Local Site Remediation Revolving Fund. So we gotta come up with, uh, shorter acronyms. But essentially, what that allows us to do is support future brownfield projects with upfront assistance. And so, right now, um, that, that's what that'll allow. And the state, the statute, uh, the Brownfield statute allows that. So the 5% administrative fee, you get a little over $133,000. That, uh, the revolving loan fund capture, after the development reimbursement period is, uh, is done, uh, we'll get about $950,000 to support future brownfields, uh, sort of at the end of the plan there. And then, during the life of the plan, that 5% local pass-through, uh, that's about $140,000 over the life of the plan. Uh, the total revenue during the plan is a little over $1.2 million. The maximum developer reimbursement, now this covers all the different, uh, barrier costs, the site, site redevelopment, uh, infrastructure, all kinds of other improvements, uh, is about $1.6 million. Uh, the annual post-plan tax revenue, so this is what we would collect, once the plan is over, all the capture has stopped, you're looking at a little bit over $215,000 per year on a property that is currently, again, uh, not paying taxes. It's a, it's a tax exempt property. So, so there's that. Um, and with that, I'm happy to take any technical questions you might have, but also, uh, just like the last plan, I can invite the developer team to come on up.
It'd be great if somebody from the development team wanted to come up and just give us a, yeah.
Jim Clark, uh, president of Robertson Brothers Company. Uh, with me here tonight is Mark from SME. Uh, I'll do fluff and he can do stuff. So if you get into numbers, Mark, put all the programs together. We're delighted to be in, here in Ferndale. We responded to an RFP from the school district in February of, uh, of 2016, um, entered a purchase agreement in September of that year. And we've been working since that time, uh, with the Brownfield Committee. We had hoped to get revolving loan funds initially. There was some indication those might be available. After an inventory, they were not available for this site. We're hopeful, uh, if we're successful tonight, that we can come back and talk to you about the Taft site. I think there was a, um, at least at the staff level, there was some interest in making sure that, um, if the city was providing funds, um, TIF dollars, that the school district also shared in those amounts. So there's no revolving loan fund here, but what we did secure from the school district was a reduction in the down payment, enabling us to demolish the school building up, upfront. So the same roughly amount that would be hopefully on Taft is now here. So there was some shoulder to shoulder between the school district and the city, um, as this was put together. So we're delighted to be here. The houses we're building are, are similar to houses we built in other locations. From a practitioner's standpoint, um, there's some very substantial cost to redeveloping this site, totaling cost of over $16,000, meaning you'd have to charge $36,000 more at 50% sales price, just for the land development to relocate the storm sewer, remediate the environmental concerns and take down the building. So, those are, those are economic, uh, headwinds that we could not, uh, could not profitably do. So we're here in front of you to, uh, do our first, uh, TIF, uh, if, if successful tonight. I will say, um, in working with SME, who is a professional in this, uh, we feel we've been extremely conservative in our estimates. Um, if, if other projects with this, you know, I know we're now in the proximity to a skate park, so maybe we'll have faster sales. I learned that tonight. But if, if other, other communities are, um, any indication, we would see, see this selling out in 18 months to, uh, two years. So the, um, discussion about an 11-year and a 20-year reimbursement, I think is, um, listen, I didn't, I lived through '06, '07 and everything, so anything's possible. We don't feel it's probable, uh, in any, uh, any, any form or fashion. So, um, the 5% reimbursement, I think, was a very creative thing that SME came up with. Uh, so there is a base value to the, uh, to the city. And with that, I'll answer questions. Or Mark is here.
Well, first, we'll open it up to the public because this is actually technically a public hearing. And so, I'll do the same thing. We will, uh, open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to address council this evening on the approval of the Wilson Park Village Brownfield Plan and reimbursement agreement. Is there anyone here that would like to address council? All right. Hearing none. We'll close the public, uh, hearing. And I will open it up to council and ask you if there's any questions, comments, or motions that you would like to do.
Well, why don't, um, I start, since I am the representative on the incentives committee, as well as the, uh, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and have been in these conversations since the beginning. Um, I think what we're seeing here is part of our, our new policies is, I think, as the administrative fee capture, um, is making sure that we're, um, getting compensated for the time that staff spends over the life of the actual incentive, because there is, um, time that staff need to spend, like in year six or year 10 or year 15. And so, this helps us cover those expenses, but also, um, replenish the actual funds so that we can apply to future projects. Um, I also appreciate the 5% local pass-through because this really was the school district selling their property to a private developer who had to go through the city's process for redevelopment. Um, and in that, uh, some challenging, um, uh, issues to address with, um, the cost of asbestos removal and building removal. And so, I appreciate the school district, um, ponying up some, some money to help offset the costs of building removal, um, so that the city didn't have to, um, spend its capital in order to do that. Um, so I guess a partnership with the school district on, on a, on property that they, um, wanted to offload, um, to help balance their books. So to that end, I think this is a interesting crafted, creatively crafted incentive policy that, um, meets everything in our incentive policy. Um, so.
I just want to, um, thank, uh, Robertson Brothers for coming to the incentives committee meeting and, and giving, you know, providing some clarity to some questions that we had. And by, and keeping the community informed as to the process. And also want to thank Jordan, your, your team, your economic team, because, uh, it's, uh, the work you guys do and, uh, that's going to bring, uh, the developments to this community. So I really appreciate all the work you've put in. And again, thank you Robertson Brothers. And to the Economic Incentives Committee.
And to punctuate, um, I just wanted to thank, um, Jim Clark and your team for spending so much time with our residents to make sure that the development fit the character of the neighborhood and met the needs of the residents. Um, it's really important to us and, um, I just want to let you know, you're a developer who went the extra mile and I appreciate that.
You're welcome. And we're delighted to be here, so.
It looks like a very attractive, uh, project that we're excited to have. Um, we don't build a lot of subdivisions in Ferndale, at least we haven't, uh, for the last 50 years or so. So it's pretty exciting for us to have something of this quality and, and, and character, so.
And it's a big change.
Yeah, very much so.
They're not subdivisions, they're neighborhoods.
Thank you. I stand corrected.
Right on.
All right, so is there a motion? My dad's a land surveyor, by the way. We call them subdivisions. But I've-
Maybe north of here, there's subdivisions.
I stand corrected. Uh, is there a motion?
Sorry, I closed it out by accident. Um, I move that Ferndale City Council approve the Brownfield Plan dated May 22nd, 2017, and reimbursement agreement dated May 25th, 2017, for 1244 Paxton, based on the following findings as listed.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Polica. Now, any final discussions, questions, comments?
Council, may I interject with, um, a couple, actually, items, um, now that the discussion is open? Just, um, recommendations to clean up the, the motion. Um, for example, one, I would recommend that you include an additional item to, um, item 11 of the reimbursement agreement. And also to make sure your motion clarifies that you're approving both the plan and the reimbursement agreement. Um, but I'd ask that you add the following sentence to, to item 11, just to, to sort of ensure alignment with both documents.
Wait, wait a minute, item 11. I see six findings in the motion.
I see six as well.
So I'm not sure what you're referencing.
I apologize. Through the, in the packet, the actual reimbursement agreement itself.
Oh, in the packet?
Yes.
On page-
This would be item 11 of the reimbursement agreement and, uh-
Hang on, so let us get there.
Of course.
Oh, of the reimbursement agreement, which is in the back. Okay, yeah, so all the way back. And then it's page five of the contract, but yeah, okay, yeah.
I see it.
Got it? Okay. So the pass-through agreement, number 11. Everybody there, everybody sure what we're at?
It's bolded.
Yeah, near the back, but on page five of the agreement. Yeah, in bold.
And with that, that sentence would be, um, additionally, as outlined in section E of the Brownfield Plan, 95% of the incremental tax revenues will be captured, uh, for the, uh, for a period of five years following the developer reimbursement period.
a period of five years following the developer reimbursement period. Just to make sure that that's doubly inserted, to just ensure that it's referenced. That was actually something in Dan's review of the document that he identified, so I want to make sure that we have that cleaned up.
And Barb, you have that language?
I do now.
Or you will? Okay. Thank you.
All right, and I will make a friendly amendment to include the changes to Item 11 on page five, as noted by our clerk.
And I support that amendment.
And was there another one, Jordan, or no?
I believe that is it.
Okay.
There actually was, in paragraph seven, the last line that says, "Not reimbursed to the BRA by the owner." It should be "not reimbursed by the BRA to the owner." It was reversed.
Yes.
To the owner.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep, and with that amendment as well, Item 7, page 4.
Councilmember Polika.
And I support that as well.
Support that? All right. Barb, you have that change? All right. So it has been moved and supported. Further discussion? If not, Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Let's see, Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thank you, Jordan.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Look forward to working with you. We are now finally to call the audience, so I apologize for those of you who wanted to address counsel this evening. We're an hour and a half in. We're usually a little sooner in the agenda than that. But this is your opportunity, if you are here in person and would like to address counsel on any issue that's not on the agenda, because we give you an opportunity to do that when we get to that part of the agenda. But if there's anyone here that would like to address counsel on any issue, come on up, give us your name and address, and three minutes are all yours.
My name is Jackie Sloan, 2161 Chevlin. I'm here representing Ferndale High School, class of 1977. We're having our 40th class reunion this July, July 15, and we're doing all the inviting by social media, because past records have been lost. So I'm here to make a plea, anybody that has a '77 graduate, we're also opening it up to the class of '78. So we're combining '77, '78. It's July 15, 6:00 PM till midnight, the Sterling Inn in Van Dyke, the Sterling Inn in Sterling Heights, on 15 and Van Dyke. Tickets are $60 a person, and that's dinner, DJ, photo booth. There will be a cash bar. We have a block of rooms blocked off at a reduced rate for people that are coming in from out of town and want to stay, or somebody that doesn't want to drink and drive home. To get your tickets, you can go to www.fhs1977/1978reunion.com. And Chief Collins, I know you're used to giving tickets and giving money back. If you give me some money, I'll give you a ticket.
How about that? And can we make sure, I don't know if it's Care or Barb, did it get up on our public access message? Because if you lost it, we can help get the word out as well on our television system.
102 people coming so far.
Excellent. Wow. Well, congratulations.
I will get money from you in your beautiful life.
You know where he works. Excellent, thank you, Jackie. Cindy?
I'll be really fast, I promise. Cindy Wilcock from the Ferndale DDA. I just wanted to expand a little bit about our Art and Smart project. Like I said earlier, it was a really great opportunity, not only to work with Smart, but also with a volunteer resident who really had a dream. So our Oakland County Ombuds person for Smart, Madonathan Van Fossen, reached out to Dustin Hagforce, that volunteer and I, and asked us to join her and present the project at the Michigan Downtown Association Conference on Thursday. So we had the opportunity to do that, which was my first time.
We being you, right?
Me and Dustin and Madonna. So it was the first time I've ever spoken at a conference. I'm finally not sick to my stomach now, but it was fun. It was really well received. We did notice that everybody in the audience did not look at their cell phones during our entire presentation, so we were pretty impressed with ourselves. But like I said, it was really well received. There's already been some communities in Oakland County that want to continue the program in their communities, as well as communities outside the Smart region, that have reached out to us to ask us for information, and they're working with their local transit authorities. And on that note, about a month ago, at the annual Main Street Oakland County Awards, we received an award for that project on a shoestring for doing a project that had an impact on the community for a very small budget. So it was a very small budget. We're looking forward to having a little bit more money to play with this time. Also, at the Main Street Oakland County Awards, Chris and Tiffany Best of the Rust Belt Market were named Business Persons of the Year for the county. We are really proud of them, really excited. It was a well-deserved honor. It was not only because of their business, but also because of their involvement in the community, both as a business and individuals. So I think the community is going to use them as an example in some upcoming projects, so as soon as we hear more about that, we'll be sharing that. So that was a fun thing. And also, this past Thursday, along with 10 other communities, Ferndale received their national Main Street accreditation at a press conference out in Rochester. We have been nationally accredited for 12 straight years. It's a pretty big deal to us, and it happens because of our volunteers and our partnerships with the city and other organizations, so we're really excited about that. And finally, this Thursday is our fundraiser for public art, the Art of the Cocktail, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM at Valentine and M Brew. Tickets are $40. There are still some available, but they're going pretty fast. Not only is it a craft cocktail competition, where you get to sample the works of 11 local bartenders, there's also a silent auction. The Ashton Neighborhood Pleasure Club will be playing, and we'll have some appetizers. It's a really good time to support some really good public art. In downtown Ferndale, we're hoping to do some more functional public art and use existing assets rather than just creating art. That's all I've got.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else would like to address counsel this evening? All right, seeing not, I will go on now to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is items that counsel considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless counsel pulls something from that agenda, as Councilmember Polika already has with Item D. So I'll read the rest of the consent agenda items now. Item A is the Treekeeper Software Renewal Agreement. Item B is the consideration of the appointment of SACRA representatives, as submitted by the DPW Director. Item C is the approval of the Summer Tax Special Assessments, as submitted by our Finance Director. Item E is the approval of the Dream Cruise Rock and Live Entertainment Performance Agreement, as submitted by our Special Events Director. Item F is the approval of the 2017 Ferndale Dream Cruise Street and Lot Closure Plan, also submitted by Special Events Director. Item G is the Ferndale Youth Assistance Contribution. Item H is the approval of the Police Department Rifle Purchase, as submitted by our Chief of Police. Item I is the approval of the Request for Changes to Non-Union Wages and Benefits for July 1, 2017, as submitted by our HR Director. And then finally, Item J is the approval of the Bills and Payroll, as submitted by the City Managed Office, subject to review, of course, by our Council Finance Committee. So what is counsel's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I support.
It is moved by Leaks May and supported by Piana. Is there any discussion, questions on the consent agenda this evening? There probably is a point of clarification, which is on Item G. I think that was corrected in the items that you received, but it was, the clarification was that the funds for the Ferndale Youth Assistance Award would be coming from the Drug Forfeiture Fund, not from the general fund. So you should have each received an updated copy of that, just to be clear. All right, any other questions or comments? Barb, would you call the roll on the consent agenda, please?
Councilmember Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Item A is the consideration of the appointment of Leah Deasy to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And who's going to introduce that? Is Barb, are you going to introduce that item, or who's?
Oh. Does Jordan want to, or?
I can, I sit on the BZA.
You sit on the BZA, Greg.
So Leah is applied for the, we have an opening on the BZA, and I have not had the opportunity to meet her in person, but her resume, as you can see in the packet, speaks volumes. She is currently in her final semester of graduate school to earn her Master's in Urban Planning. So I think that's a great experience to have on the BZA. So I would encourage us to put that forward.
Is Leah here by any chance? All right, there we go. Leah, why don't you just come on up and introduce yourself, and just maybe speak briefly on your interest in serving, which we appreciate.
Hi, my name is Leah Deasy. I'm a Ferndale resident of five years now, and I've watched some of the council meetings and the planning meetings and the board meetings. I usually stay pretty quiet. I've had a long-time interest in city government and urban planning, and I think I was actually inspired to get involved in Ferndale city government when Ms. Piana actually came and spoke to one of my classes and talked about the benefits of, I think you said, having your feet in both worlds, living in Ferndale and working in Detroit, which I do as well. So you inspired me. So I look forward, I thank you, hopefully, for this opportunity, and look forward to serving my city.
Thank you. Thank you, very nice.
Thank you for that shout-out. You never know. Mayor Porter appointed me to the zoning board of appeals when I was getting my degree in urban planning, so you never know. You could be here one day.
Excellent. Wonderful. Any other questions or comments for Leah or on this item?
Thank you for volunteering and serving.
I appreciate it. Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That appointment is adopted. Thank you. And then the next item of business is the consideration of appointment of Austin Colson as an alternate to the BZA. Is Austin here? Austin, why don't you come on up and introduce yourself, and just tell us a little bit about your reason for your interest in serving? And thanks for waiting with us for an hour and 45 minutes. Appreciate it.
Austin, very interesting meeting. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I've been a resident of Ferndale for five years now, and after one year of living here, it was easy to make the decision to invest in the community and to purchase a home here. So I have enjoyed my time here, and I worked for Smart, and I've held two very unique positions, and I've been able to watch the way that local government works, and it's excited me. And I went to Michigan State University and earned a bachelor's in urban regional planning with a specialization in environmental economics. I've been able to apply my degree in public policy, but I would like to have the opportunity to apply it in a more traditional urban planning role. So I would really appreciate this opportunity.
Well, beyond the fact that you're a Spartan, which I love, it's always impressive, you know, the quality of applicants and the experience that they bring, and you're no exception, so thank you for your interest in serving. I'm curious, what does an external drug and alcohol coordinator do for Smart?
So Smart has 42 community partners. One of them was an area on Agency 1B. We work with them. Each of the communities that operate a Smart vehicle or receive funds that result in a vehicle being on the road, they must follow FTA and DOT drug and alcohol regulations, and it's my responsibility to make sure that each one of them are following those regulations.
That makes total sense. Thank you for explaining that. Anybody else have any questions or comments for Austin?
Oh, it's uncanny, though. I left Dearborn to move to Ferndale, too, so bought my first house in Ferndale from that transition. So, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your interest. Any questions or comments, Council?
Comment, I'm just, I'm really impressed to see so many people wanting to come on board with the experience in the urban planning, because it's the sign of the times, so glad to have you aboard.
I used to say we have a lot of journalists that live in Ferndale, but I'm going to change that and say we have a lot of planners that live in Ferndale. We do.
There's a reason.
Now, are you attracting them all, or are you recruiting them?
It might be the walkability.
Oh, that too. All right, so Barb, would you call the roll? Oh, no, let's have a motion. Motion.
I would like to move to confirm the appointment of Austin Colson as an alternate to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a term ending December 31, 2019.
Support.
All right. Moved by Polika, supported by Leaks May. Any further questions or comments? Now, Barb, call the roll.
Councilmember Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That appointment is adopted. Thank you, Austin. Thank you, both of you, for your willingness to serve. We'll move now to Item C, which is the consideration of the appointment of Reginald Sutherland to the Ferndale Housing Commission. And are you Reginald? So you hung out with us for an hour and 45 minutes as well. We appreciate that. So come on up and introduce yourself, and just tell us a little bit about why you're interested in serving.
I'm Reginald Sutherland. I'm a Ferndale resident now for about five years.
Excellent.
And I live at Autumn House. And I'm currently, well, I was currently on their tenants' committee.
Yeah.
And the position opened in the...
And you're a big shoes to fill, because she did a wonderful job. So you have a big responsibility to represent the residents.
Yes. So the position is available for me to possibly do more for my community.
Excellent.
I'd like to, if I'm allowed.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions of Reginald?
I particularly liked reading your story, and really appreciate you wanting to further your service with this community, so.
Yes, thank you.
I think you bring a really great perspective to the board with your background, working with the Nationwide Patient Advocate Association and the Wayne County Probate Court, so.
Agree.
Thank you.
So a motion would be in order.
I move to confirm the appointment of Reginald Sutherland to the Ferndale Housing Commission for a term ending May 1, 2022. Wow, you got a long way.
Not moving anytime soon, are you, Reginald? All right. Is there support?
Support.
All right, it's a move by Polika and supported by Piana. Any last comments? Barb, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That appointment is adopted. Thank you, Reginald, for serving. All right, our final item is, was previously on the consent agenda, and that's Item D, the approval of the 2017 Ferndale Dream Cruise sponsorship agreement, as submitted by the Special Events Director. And Councilmember Polika, you pulled that item?
Yes, I work for Ford Motor Company, and as part of my employment, I am not allowed to vote on any issues of any financial matter revolving the company and that agreement with the city.
Yep, understand.
Good policy, yep. They're well-understood. But is Michael still here? There's Michael. But I do, I'm going to pull Michael up, because I want to congratulate him, and note that, and I know the Dream Cruise organization as a whole is working on another presenting sponsor. They just lost Chevrolet after six years, but this is, how many years with Ford?
Their first year was 2008.
2008, so this is nine years with Ford Motor Company sponsoring Mustang Alley, which we very greatly appreciate. But is Michael still here? There's Michael. But I do, I'm going to pull Michael up because I want to congratulate him and note that, and I know the Dream Cruise organization as a whole is working on another presenting sponsor. They just lost Chevrolet after six years. But this is, how many years with Ford?
Their first year was 2008.
2008, so this is nine years with Ford Motor Company sponsoring Mustang Alley, which we very greatly appreciate. It goes a long way, and I don't have to tell you this, Michael, towards helping us cover the costs of the Dream Cruise Festival.
Absolutely.
So. It goes a long way toward Hilton, too.
So tell us a little bit about what they're going to be supporting this year.
Well, their financial support pretty much helps secure all of the assets that they bring to make an exciting experience for people, especially those who are Mustang fans and Ford enthusiasts, as well as it also helps fund our rock and live entertainment stage and all the entertainment that we bring into, have that classic rock and roll vibe.
Yep.
And then we also helps fund the emergency vehicle show on Friday. So it does help considerably in what we're able to do.
Well, and thank you for stewarding the relationship with Ford Motor and making sure that unlike Chevrolet, and I'm not, that's not a criticism, but unlike that relationship, that our partnership is nine years strong and hopefully many to come.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. So is there a motion?
I move to authorize the attached 2017 Ferndale Dream Cruise sponsorship agreement between the City of Ferndale and GTB Agency LLC as agent for Ford Motor Company and authorize the mayor's signature as submitted by the Director of Special Events.
Support.
All right. Moved by Piana and supported by Leaks May. Any further comments or questions? Barb, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes. And we'll note that Councilman Polica has abstained. Thank you. All right, that completes our regular agenda items for this evening. Next item is call to council. Please Chief Collins, anything for the good of the community this evening?
Couple things, Your Honor. We, I would like to advise council that we will be welcoming back Captain Palazzolo on Monday. He graduated from the FBI National Academy last Wednesday. I had the honor of watching him graduate, walk across the same room that you saw in the movies. Were they a very cool place. Brought back a lot of memories. I was there 19 years ago when I graduated from the FBI Academy, so it was a very cool experience. A lot of changes, but a lot of things the same. So we'll welcome him back and I'll be very happy to have him back.
I'm sure you will. That's a great feat of accomplishment for him.
It really is.
Is he getting his brick?
He's made a lot of connections. I walked down the halls with him and he, everybody, everybody knew him, especially in the physical fitness area. Everybody knew Captain Collins. I missed what you said.
Chief, is he getting his brick?
Oh, he's got his brick.
Okay, so I want to see the brick.
And lastly, we are happy to announce that we did our interviews with our cadet program, our cadet program with the graduates from the high school.
One, we believe that we're going to make a job offer this week to Tenaya Kellum, a graduate
of University High School, and Ronelle McGee, a graduate of Ferndale High School to work with us this summer and during the year of their 13th year at Baker College.
That is excellent. Kara, you're going to be all over that story, right? Excellent. That's wonderful news. Thank you, Chief. That's a great program. Jordan, anything else for the good of the community?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Fire Chief Sullivan, anything for the good of the community this evening?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. Finance, there's always good, exciting stuff happening in finance. Not after the budget's adopted. All right. Community and economic engagement this evening?
Nothing this evening.
Wow. Oh, I'm not going to do it, two meetings in a row. Lorena, anything from the Recreation Department this evening? Lloyd's already prepping his.
Yep.
He's got show and tell.
He's got show and tell.
Good evening again. So we have a few exciting events that are coming up over the summer and within this month. You can look forward to yoga in the Geary Park, and that's going to start on June 25th. The first class is actually $10 and it's going to be a yoga kickoff party where it's going to be a live, live music and performances by Maruga Shakti and Tony Strat Thomas. And that'll be again June 25th from 11:00 a.m. until 1:30. And then every other Sunday, there'll be yoga at Geary Park and it'll just be donation based at the same time at 11:00 a.m.
Every Sunday at what time?
11:00.
At 11:00.
But the first Sunday is the only Sunday that you'll be paying and that's because of the kickoff and the live entertainment. We also have our Ferndale Youth Fall Soccer Program. Registration is currently open now. It'll be open until August 3rd and soccer will begin on the 14th. As you all know, Safety Town has been completed. And so we'll be having open houses throughout the summer to feature a lot of different safety things for kids to be aware of and to learn about. We're partnering with police, fire, DPW, and CED, as well as other local partners to offer different programs, like a passport program for each time. And that'll be every second and fourth Thursday, starting June 22nd at Garbit Park from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And you can check our Facebook page and our website starting next week for what each open house is going to offer. And our Summer Youth Camp is about to begin. It's not too late to register. And lastly, you can look forward to Shakespeare in the Park in August. So we'll start advertising that now and they'll be presenting the 12th night at Martin Road.
At Martin Road Park. Very cool. Looking forward to that. And looking forward to someday when we have an amphitheater where we could actually perform them that way. But that's very exciting. Thank you, Lorena.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, Lloyd, he's got a show and tell. I know just by the, look how easy this is. It glides so smoothly.
Listen to that, yeah. One handed, it's empty.
Want to grab the microphone?
Oh, yeah. Yep, grab the microphone so they can all hear you. Awesome.
This is our new recycling, single stream recycling cart that will be delivered to the residents beginning Monday, July 17th, on your normal trash day. And they will be continued to be delivered on the regular trash day for our residents until the entire city is done, expected to be done by the very beginning of August.
Okay.
And so what goes in this cart is cans, papers, plastic jugs, cartons, and one more.
Styrofoam, please say styrofoam.
Paper, cartons, cans, bottles, of course.
Bottles, yes.
And then everything else, do not put garbage in here, please. That will ruin the recycling and allow us not to recycle the material.
Yep.
And so this has been long in coming, but finally here, beginning July 17th, you'll see these delivered to the residents at their curb.
I know the residents are very excited about it. A couple of common questions that we've gotten. First of all, there's no fee for the residents, right? That's important to note.
There is not.
So they will not be charged for these. What are some of the other questions that are?
Your brown bin.
Huh?
What can you do?
Thank you. What do you do with your current brown bins? Thank you, Councilwoman. Yeah.
The current bins, you can recycle them.
Yeah.
You can keep them for any other use that you see fit.
Yeah.
And that's about it.
Okay. Can they turn them in?
They could turn them in.
Bring them to DPW yard if they wanted?
DPW yard at 521 East Camborn, or just put them in the recycling bin for recycling, and I'm sorry, the recycling cart.
Yeah.
But either way.
But what you can't do is put them out at the curb, right?
They still could use them in the curb.
You still, they'll.
They still will service them if they choose, for some reason, if you have maybe a light recycling week, you could put out.
Oh, that's.
Many people, what many people are doing is using the bins for, to put the recyclings in the home and then bringing them out to the cart.
Well, that's what I'll be doing.
And that's good news for them if you choose to do that.
Right.
Lloyd, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, though, that if for somebody who maybe doesn't recycle or it's hard for them to use the cart, that they, after 30 days, I believe it is, they do have the option of turning the cart back in if they don't like it. It's not encouraged, but it can be, if it's too much for physical limitations or you're just not a recycler, which some people aren't, you can actually get that back and just use the bin if you would like.
Yes, the SACRA asks all residents to at least try them out for 30 days.
Yep.
And then after 30 days, if they choose to continue to use the bin, they may do so. Also, there's an opportunity to, if you're a super recycler, to upsize your cart as well.
That's a lot of recycling.
Okay.
What about multifamily dwellings and apartments?
Some of the private, the multi-development units will have to make special arrangements with the trash. The city doesn't service every residential unit.
Right. Okay.
I did want to make a comment.
Please.
Lloyd mentioned that don't put your trash in the bin, but trash also means one-third of your cottage cheese less in your container. That is not, throwing it in the bin is not recycling. You need to empty out your cottage cheese and other things in your containers in order to put them in the bin. So while it's not freestanding trash or garbage, still please clean your containers because your food can contaminate the recycling facility. This is what we've learned through the FBSC, who have been working on the recycling plan for the city. So another shout out to them today as well.
Well, and that will still draw rodents if you're, if you're throwing out dirty recyclables, recyclables, you're still drawing, you know, drawing out rodents, so.
Right.
So.
And then I had.
They're rodent proof.
And then I had a suggestion, it's only for fun, but it would be cool to see if we could have the best reuse of a reuse recycling bin.
Oh.
If you're not going to get rid of them, however you're using them, that would be kind of fun.
Lloyd, may I ask, will there be some sort of, so these recycling bins will take all plastics? It won't be just everything?
Yep.
Even lids to laundry detergent bottles?
Caps.
Okay.
Caps, okay. And what should we still do with our styrofoam? Because we set aside our styrofoam and take it to SACRA on our own. Is that still what we have to do?
I'm afraid so, along with electronics.
Okay.
So Lloyd, I noticed there's a number on the front of this bin. Are each one individually numbered?
Yes, and correct as well for future development in the program, or maybe some promotional things that they're working on, I'm sorry, that they're working on at SACRA that will identify.
Are you on? He's on. No, it's not.
So that they're working on other promotional programs possibly that the RF tag will allow us to pursue.
Well, my question was going to be, because I was going to encourage residents to sort of paint their name and address on them in case it somehow rolls down the street and rolls away. But if you knew your number, that's another identification way to, as well, okay.
But can we personalize anyway?
I don't see why not.
Can you personalize your recycling bin?
That is Ferndale. If you wanted to paint your recycle bin, that'd be.
Or sticker it.
Yes. Kind of cool. Any, we have a resident question about the bins. Jess. Dennis.
Dennis Augersen. Those are some pretty large containers there. I know I'm an empty nester now, but it would take my wife and I a long time to fill one of them. You just brought up rodents. Well, we've had rodent issues in our neighborhood in that, do we still have to take those containers? I mean, do they have to come to our house? Because we, it takes us probably two trash, two weeks of trash to fill the one we got now, the recycle bin. And I mean, we recycle everything, too. We do at our house.
They request the residents use them for 30 days. However, you are welcome to continue using the existing recycling bin if you choose to.
But you know, I guess my point is, is do we still have to take that?
I can try to catch, they come in bulk and as you can see, they're numerically dispersed amongst the trash routes, so it may be already kind of in the, in the bin, but, I mean, in the truck, but we can work something out.
Yeah, okay.
They certainly, if you're absolutely sure that you do not wish to use it or have need for it, we can make some arrangements.
It'll take a couple of months for us to fill one of those. That's how much recycling we do.
All right. Thank you, Lloyd. Appreciate it. Anything else?
Just a, just a quick question, because you didn't bring it up. But currently, in the brown bins, you're able to put batteries in a plastic bag, in a baggie, and they'll take it. At least that's what I've done. So I'm assuming that you can't do it now because they don't manually sort everything. So I'm assuming batteries in a baggie aren't going to work anymore.
Will there be a listing of what you could put in?
I'm not sure you're supposed to do that now.
Actually, I didn't know that they were recycling the batteries in the bins.
Yeah, as long as you put them in a baggie so that they can separate them.
Yeah. Thanks.
At least they did for me, so.
As councilors are aware, Pinecrest will be closing for reconstruction. And that is between Nine Mile and Woodland, expected to reopen sometime early in August. The, it will be, it'll be closing on June 19th, you know, so just after the school closes. And the residents have already been notified, but I'm just giving it an additional, you know, bit of advertising, so anybody who may not have gotten the flyer or who has some interest will know to give a call to the DPW or to visit the city's website, which we're promoting, or not promoting, but informing the residents of the construction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, hang on. Lloyd, Lloyd, do you want to make an announcement on a new promotion for somebody?
Soon to go via email. Carlos Kennedy has been promoted to Deputy Director of Operations.
Ah.
Those.
Feelings exactly.
Excellent.
Anyone who has run into Carlos in the last 10 years here.
Yeah, great.
Realizes what dedication he has to the city and the Public Works Department. And so I could not be more pleased and satisfied with the selection of Carlos Kennedy.
Yeah. Excellent. Good news. Thank you. Joe, anything from the Assistant City Manager's Office, please?
Yeah, I thought it would touch base on the development of Troy Project. Last week, we did hold our first community input session, which was the first time that we gathered with the public and showed some of the designs. It was a successful event and we have posted those designs onto the city's parking website. So those, you can read about those designs in the session at www.parkferndale.com and just click over to Parking Deck. Also, I expect to present council with an update at the next June council meeting.
Great. Appreciate it. All right. Barb, anything from the City Clerk's Office?
No. Marty's on vacation. She'll be back next week and.
She's on a pretty fabulous vacation.
She really is.
Following her on Facebook. Yeah. Can't wait to hear the details. April, anything from the City Manager's Office?
I do have one thing. I am pleased to announce that the Michigan Green Communities Challenge, last week, we did get another bronze certificate for our environmental efforts here at the City of Ferndale, so hoping next time get that silver trophy. So, I want to thank, we actually had two of our FBSC members who attended the conference. We had Todd Lincolnship and Jennifer Young, who participated on behalf of the City of Ferndale to learn more about green initiatives and things of that nature, so we'll be pleased with that.
Excellent. Thank you. Dan Chris?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Nothing tonight. All right. Councilwoman Leaks May?
I have nothing tonight, but I just wanted to make a comment to Chief Collins. If at some point you can post regarding those cadets, I think the community would love to hear that and what you guys are doing, so please do, if you're not doing it already.
Well, I'm sure we're going to make a big deal out of it.
Okay, okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great program. Thank you. All right. Councilman Pollica.
Just one thing. Ferndale Pride was last Saturday, was a huge success. First year that we had perfect weather, finally. It only took six years. And we had record turnouts, over 20,000 people. And unfortunately, Julia Music could not be here tonight to report out, but I did want to give a shout out for her and to her for the incredible work that she did.